Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor, pro temp mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. I have no announcements this evening. That brings us to our first public comment session. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. If you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and approach the podium.
Hi there, Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street. We all love Marquette. And we are all used to seeing panhandlers outside of Walmart and panhandlers right by Papa Murphy's on the corner. But in the past two weeks, there have been panhandlers in Marquette, the city of. Two weeks ago, a friend of mine called as she from out of town, she was going back home from out of town and on the corner of Front, no, on the corner of Fourth and Washington, someone was there with a sign asking for money. Today, I'm coming down Third Street and I turn on Washington Street and someone is standing in front of the post office with a sign asking for help. Times are rough. Now, this is the Christmas season. Times are rough. There are a lot of people unemployed, but there are also a lot of jobs, a lot of, a lot of agencies, whether it be Salvation Army, Goodwill, St. Vincent de Paul, that help people. My question is, is there some kind of rule in Marquette about panhandling? If so, what happens? And at least, could you print up something where these people can go and not be on a street corner asking people for money? It's becoming like a city here. And there are some parts of a city that I don't know that we welcome. I don't believe it's our police department. I don't believe it's any, I think it's just situations right now. We have the, a lot of the homes to help people. We have all kinds of agencies. Maybe they don't know about them. I don't know. But I would hate to see panhandling starting to be a problem in Marquette. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to see you all. I'm Darlene Allen and I live at 805 North Front Street in Marquette. I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters of Marquette County. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We're a group of local volunteers who work together to defend voting rights and encourage active and informed participation in government. And I'm here this evening as a representative of our local league. Utilizing the input of local clerks, the League proposed a resolution advocating for citizens' access to voting and for fair participation in our secure elections. This evening on your agenda, you have a similar resolution for the city commissioners to consider. Our local league also recently passed our own resolution expressing our opposition to any legislation or actions that restrict access to voting or make election administration less equitable and efficient. It confirms our support of policies that expand and protect fair access to voting and that sustain and strengthen our election systems. We hope that the Marquette City Commissioners will unanimously support this resolution before you to let the citizens of Marquette, the voters, know of your support for democracy. It feels like our participation in free, fair, and secure elections, the very foundation of our government, is under threat. It's disheartening to the League that there are so many bills, petitions, and actions that are in the works in Michigan and across the country that will restrict voters' access to the ballot and make election administration less effective, efficient, and fair. Our last presidential election was the most secure in history, and Michigan already has many safeguards for elections in place. The majority of our citizens believe in the right and the importance of voting, and in 2018, Michigan voters overwhelmingly voted to amend the Constitution to help voters not take rights away. Much of the legislation and the petitioning we are seeing in Michigan is not only unnecessary, they actually disenfranchise voters from participating in a fundamental action in our democracy: voting. We ask the commission adopt this resolution and that also as individuals, you help us to speak out in opposition to legislation or actions that would restrict our voting rights. We have good election practices in place, and our Secretary of State has an agenda to make them even better and at the same time improve access to voting. We all need to be thinking about this, talking about this, and doing our best to preserve and improve the access to voting for all our citizens, and we need to continue to support our clerks, our poll workers, and other election officials in doing their jobs. Let the Marquette City Commission's voice be heard on this as well. Thank you all very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I'm Priscilla Burnham. I live at 2021 Woodland Avenue in the city of Marquette, and I've been a resident of the city for 45 years. I too am here representing the League of Women Voters of Marquette County in my capacity as Vice President for Voter Services. I echo the sentiments of our President, Darlene Allen, in urging your support for this resolution. As we've seen, democracy is not guaranteed. It requires nurturing, vigilance, and the active support of concerned citizens. As the saying goes, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." The Michigan Secretary of State's office has issued a number of proposed recommendations regarding elections. Since the folks in charge of running our elections are the ones most affected by some of the changes that are being made or proposed to our election laws, we wanted to gain their input. Here are the top four recommendations favored by the clerks that we've talked to. One, making the November Election Day a holiday. This would have the multiple, would have multiple benefits, among them, enabling a large number of eligible voters to vote in person. Allow working folks, not just retirees, to apply to be election inspectors. It would free up public schools to be designated as polling places. These are locations and buildings that people are familiar with and feel comfortable in. Making elections a holiday has already happened in 10 states, and several institutions like the University of Michigan have also declared a holiday. Number two, allowing overseas service members and their spouses to return their ballots electronically. Currently, overseas military personnel have to rely on international mail service. This would allow for speedy and secret transmission of their ballots. Third, allowing the processing of absentee ballots prior to Election Day. Delays in reporting election results are mostly due to processing of absentee ballots, we know that there are more of those coming in, which is a laborious and painstaking job. Processing absentee ballots in advance, even a few days, would enable timely reporting of final election results. And finally, earmarking sufficient funding for elections to support the services, the human labor, and the secure equipment that are needed to expedite the vote counting, increase the voter turnout, and make sure that our elections continue to be safe, secure, and accessible to the widest number of eligible voters. We do plan to talk-
Ms. Burnham, that is three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to ask supporters of the resolution in the audience to stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Robert Kulisek. Live at 617 Hampton in Marquette, and I would like to speak in support of the resolution that you have before you. I think the League of Women Voters as a nonpartisan group has carefully reviewed this, and the resolution in and of itself is very commendable. I think it's important that nonpartisan groups such as the League have expressed their interest in this, have carefully looked through it, and it is definitely in the best interest of the citizens of Marquette to have free access to voting. This was voted on a couple of years ago through a statewide referendum. The public supports it. I would now encourage the city commission, which is also a nonpartisan group, to express its support for voter rights and access to the ballot. I taught government for nearly 40 years at Northern Michigan University, and one of the things that I always emphasized was that voting is fundamental to democracy. And if we don't have free access to voting, it undercuts the commitment to democracy. So I ask you to vote on this memory, or this resolution that you have before you. Some of the other issues that the League is supporting, I strongly support as well, but the issue before you this evening is this resolution. So look at it, and I would suggest you support it. And I would commend the League for the work it's doing, and I hope the nonpartisan Marquette City Commission will also support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? All right, public comment is now closed. We have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation, we have our Chief of Police, Blake Rebold, who will be assisting to accept a donation, I believe, from Charter Spectrum for our police K-9 unit. So I will let him go ahead and take that away.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd like to begin by inviting Marilyn Passmore, the Director of Government Affairs for Spectrum, and she's going to speak briefly on the event tonight and start that off. And I'll elaborate a little bit after.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everyone, members of the commission. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Marilyn Passmore, and I'm the State Director for Charter's Government Affairs for Michigan. And I'm joined by several of my charter colleagues from different departments, and we are absolutely thrilled to be here. We are a national company, and you probably recognize us under the brand name Spectrum. You may not know that we've served the greater Marquette area and the U.P. for over 40 years with our cable, broadband, telephone, and now mobile offerings. We serve over 800 communities in Michigan, and we're in 41 states. 96,000 employees, 12% of which are veterans, 1,700 in Michigan, and over 100 in the U.P. 40 are here in Marquette County. So this is a local market for us, and we're thrilled to be here tonight to make an additional contribution to the K-9 program. Let me just back up a little bit. In 2019, our corporate security team came to us in Government Affairs and said, hey, we've got this great partnership with a lot of local law enforcement across all of our 41-state footprint. And one in particular that we're working with is the city of Marquette. And did you know that they're, they're doing some work to get a new K-9 officer for their, their team? And what I didn't know is that the K-9 unit out of the city Marquette Police Department covers the entire U.P. And they, the work they do is truly incredible, and these dogs are amazing and highly, highly trained. So in 2019, we gave a $10,000 contribution to the department to fund this young handsome K-9 officer. And from what I understand, he recently had surgery, so he's a little bit touchy about us getting a little too close. But again, we're thrilled to be here tonight to make an additional contribution, and I'd like to turn it back over to the chief to maybe talk about what that has meant to the department.
Absolutely. Like stated earlier, in 2019, we were looking to replace a recently retired K-9, and that's a substantial, a substantial cost to get that up and running. And at the same time, we built a relationship with Charter through mutual contacts, and, and were able to secure some funding to get that new K-9, which is K-9 ZEP. So that, along with the training that John has received over the last year, was really instrumental and really wouldn't have been possible without the assistance of Charter and that generous donation. Fast forward to the recent passing of our K-9 Nitro, you know, which was a very unfortunate and a very sad situation for us. But that partnership that we had developed back in 2019 led to them reaching out to us and wanting to donate in memory of K-9 Nitro to our fund. So with an up-and-coming new dog, new handler, and the costs associated with that, this additional donation is just a real great, you know, tribute to not only K-9 Nitro, but also to continuing to fund this real positive program that, like Marilyn said, is not just exclusive to Marquette, but for some of the surrounding agencies that don't have the resources to maintain a K-9 unit, we do assist them quite often. So we just really appreciate that. And I did want to take a quick moment to introduce Zozia Eppensteiner, if you want to just come up real quick. We wouldn't be able to do this without the assistance of her being able to help us secure those funds and transfer those funds from the corporate world to the city municipality. And Zozia is the, the CEO of the Marquette Community Foundation, so we really just appreciate that, so.
So I asked her briefly if you want to make a few comments. She said I'm good.
We're just happy to do our little small part that the community foundation can assist in the process. And as a charity that's really dedicated to the well-being of all citizens of Marquette County and residents of Marquette County, this partnership is just a really natural thing. So we're just doing our small little part. So thank you, and thank you for making us-
Thank you. And we did a photo in the hallway just because we were, we knew that K-9 officers might not really be wanting to do that in here, so. He's doing really well. No, you don't make any fast moves. So I did want to take a moment and just recognize a couple of special guests in the audience. Of course, the Charter team is here, and thank you, Zozia, appreciate your partnership. From the Congressman Jack Bergman's office, we've got Rich Rosway. There's, there's Rich there. Jay Gage from Senator Stabenow's office, and Aubrey Moore from Senator Peters's office is here representing those federal, federal teams. So they're thrilled to have us partner with the Marquette Community Foundation and give this money to the K-9 group. But I also want to have an opportunity just briefly, before I hand it over to our security team, just talk about our network. You may not know, in Michigan, as an example, our fiber-rich network stretches from the tip of the Kiwanau all the way to Monroe and back again. We deliver gigabit service in the city today. We've had gig service for two years here in the Marquette and across our footprint. And we also have a low-cost offer for low-income students and seniors. So when you hear about people wanting to connect, sometimes the issue isn't access because we have a huge network. We actually pass far more homes than take the service. But sometimes the issue could be a cost factor. So for example, our low-cost broadband called Spectrum Internet Assist is $17.99 a month for 30 meg internet, just to give you an example. But again, we offer gig service. We have 10 gig for business customers if you want it, and our network is scalable, and we're doing great things at, at Charter Spectrum. Lastly, I will just say, everything's local. Again, we have 40 employees here in the county. Joan, one of my long-term employees, is based in, in Ironwood. She's a lifelong Uper, and, you know, just been a dynamite addition to the team. So with that, I'd like to introduce Bob Shields from our corporate physical security team. And Bob's going to talk a little bit about what we do from a cybersecurity perspective and how his teams work with law enforcement across our 41-foot, 41-state footprint. Okay? Thanks, Bob.
Good evening. My, my name's Bob Shields, and I'm with our corporate physical security team in Charter, and I have responsibility for 10 states, including the state of Michigan. And again, it's just an honor to be here tonight. I was here two years ago when we were able to make the donation for ZEP and to see him today and the great work and talking with the chief. And this is really our way of giving back. You know, we're able to come in, help out law enforcement, help out the community, and being able to do this tonight, you know, provide to the K-9 Foundation just really goes a long way. And so we're honored to be here. We look forward to, you know, again, the partnership in, in the future, if there's anything we're able to help out with also. So thanks, Chief.
Thank you so much.
And then lastly, although we took a picture outside, we'll just show you the big publisher clearinghouse, Jack. We should get another picture? Sure, okay. So here's the, we're thrilled to present $2,500 to the Marquette K-9 organization-
Outside, there you go.
Trying to get us on the TV here.
There you go. Yeah, there you go. And we got, look at how handsome he is. Chief, after this one, would you like me to invite the representatives from the governmental offices to join and myself? Okay. Come on up, Jay, Aubrey, and Rich, if you want to join us. Thanks, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Good night. Well, thank you to the Charter Spectrum organization. Thank you to the community foundation in Marquette County and to our police department. It's wonderful to see the legacy continue, and it's an honor to have you here tonight. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, up next, we have another presentation from Emily Lantot. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
It is Lanto. Thank you.
Lango, thank you, with our public art commission. So Emily is here to talk with us about the wonderful work they're doing. I'll go ahead and let her take it away, and then we'll have some time for some questions and comments from the commission. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, so thank you. I am the Vice Chair of the Marquette Public Art Commission, and first I want to thank all of you for supporting and enhancing our opportunities in our community. I, I know, I know and appreciate that the arts provide engaging opportunities for us to learn about who we are as a community today, but they also provide those opportunities far into the future to learn about our cultural past, so thank you. So the Marquette Public Art Commission came out of a 2014 master plan, and from that group, it was, another group was formed, which established the public art policy, and we came out of that process. Our mission is to engage in the selection, location, commissioning, and acquisition of public art within the city of Marquette that enhances the character and identity of our community through the experience of public artwork, to reinforce the cultural, economic, and aesthetic values of creative work while recognizing the importance of artists and artwork in our communities. Our vision is promoting art's ability to educate, inspire, preserve, and enhance cultural heritage and diversity. And so what we've been up to as a commission is much like many people who have had a little bit of a stall or a snafu with 2020, but we are here to support, promote, and do consultations on projects, big and small. And right now, we're really rebuilding our momentum. While some of the sort of behind-the-scenes projects are not showy, they're really important because they preserve and enhance the longevity of, of our investment in the arts in our community. And so one of the things that we've been working on are public art maintenance standards and public art signage. These things are super important because they tell stories about our community, and they tell stories about makers, and they highlight important aspects of creativity in our community. This public maintenance plan is very important because if you're going to invest in artwork, you need to preserve it, and that's just number one. There are many cities who don't think that through, and then you have something that becomes a danger to your community. So this city public art maintenance standards will guide the city in terms of our documentation. It'll provide an inventory of art, a preservation guide, and maintenance processes that help support this goal. It's a system so that we can continue to be safe and contribute to the vitality of arts in our community. Also, there's an educational aspect, an educational aspect, and that education really involves educating city workers on, on what, how to care for the art in our community. Things can go really bad if you don't know how to take care of a bronze statue and you, you know, for instance, you take the patina off of it. It totally damages and, and reduces the longevity of that object- It totally damages and reduces the longevity of that object. And so education is important or a critical part of the public maintenance standards. And also, this standard and plan will help ensure that our investment is the best investment possible in terms of we're not wastefully spending and we're minimizing conservation expenses and that we're not neglecting our investment through improper care or maintenance. So we are in the process of working on this. We have at least an interest in one bid, B.R. Howard, but we're also getting three bids due to the cost of this project. And so we have another interested possible bidder, and then we're pursuing a third. So public art signage, as I mentioned, I can't tell you, I used to work for the DVA. How many people would ask me when I was downtown, what is this piece of art? Who made this building? And while we can't handle buildings as the Public Art Commission, we can do things to address the art. And so we're looking at signage that helps show our respect to both artists and their ideas. And also, it makes visible who is behind these projects and who is supporting these projects. And it is a way of finding where to go if you're also interested in contributing to the arts in our community. Great care has gone into, these are two examples of signs, has gone into both the informational aspects and also the accessibility and design choices. So for example, everything is sort of left-aligned. And that's due to accessibility readers. It makes it easier for accessibility readers to decipher information that way. There's a difference in bold text. We're trying not to use a lot of all caps because that also decreases accessibility. And so these are part of what we have in the process. So we have an initial quote, and we'll be working with a sign company to fabricate. And also, we'll be working with appropriate city personnel in order to get these installed. And the water months, there's currently 11 signs, nine of them outdoors and two indoors. And we have a budget of $5,000 for this project. And so currently, this is something we're working on. We're also working on promotion of both the Marquette Public Art Commission and the Friends of the Marquette Public Art Commission. And another promotional project that we're working on, with primarily the city being the lead, is the Marquette Compass, which is a public art directory. And so we have created this branding for both the Marquette Public Art Commission and the Friends of MPAC. And this helps us promote the collection in various ways, through social media, when we're asking for funds for projects, et cetera. And so this is completed. Marquette Compass is a project that the Arts and Culture Office will be implementing. We're functioning in more of an advisory capacity on this project, though we are crafting the text that will be apparent on the compass that talks about the public art commission and our role within the city. And it is coming soon. All those stages of it, I think, are publicly visible, and it is slated to go live in January of 2022. So we've also done a number of consultations, wayfinding signage for city commission and trail partners. Kids Cove is an inclusive playground that we've consulted on through Nina Itner and the Orda Collegiate Production with Travel Marquette. So these are just a few of the consultations. We continue to address folks as they arrive. And then some of the public art projects that we are in process or have worked on are Words to Live in Bike By, Queen City Courts, Creative Parks, Prismaticah, and the Cultural Trail and Indigenous Art. So Words, the first of these projects, Words to Live in Bike By, was, our goal for this project was to safely reconnect with one another as a community during the pandemic. We solicited signs for site-specific murals on the surface of the Holleyger Bike Path or multi-use trail. Applicants were asked to submit design proposals that reflected a unique and imaginative interpretation of each word and their accompanying locale. And so Michelle Tuccini, Delaney Pickett, Ben Palowski, Stella Larkin, and Alan McNulty all created projects along the trail that you can still see today. So this is the project being installed, and these are the five different sites and projects. The next project that we have been working on is Queen City Courts. And the goal of this was to commission an artwork that would help revitalize Hurley Park. And we were introducing art onto the playing surface that will help increase park usage, would attract players of all ages, and amplify the experience and amplify accessibility of art to people of all ages. It was hoped that the artwork can engage the city and neighborhood, allowing it to become a point of pride, both beautiful and functional. For this project, we received 52 submissions from both local artists, regional artists, national artists, and international artists. And from that, we called it down to five selections. We had lots of public comments. And after lots of debate and consideration, we chose Fast Break. There is a little bit of a happy bonus in that these artists are Michigan residents. And so these are the selections. You can see a rendering in the snow as well. How, I think, that's really a fun sight to see amongst all that white. And so so far in this project, the court was demoed, and there is new asphalt early in 2022. In the summer of June, we'll be using acrylic resurfacing and lime painting. And then in August, the artists will arrive and do the painting of the mural. After the mural is completed and during the mural, there'll be promotion and outreach. The artists are really interested in engaging with the community, and that's just an added bonus, I think. You wouldn't know you could be a mural painter unless you had someone show you that you could be a mural painter. And so it's really great that children and residents of Marquette will get to see that. So this is in process. And another project that we've been working on is this Creative Park Grant project. And so this is, the idea is to provide local artists with capital support to create a small project with a big impact in a Marquette park. Projects might manifest as temporary sculptures, performances, temporary murals. And the project aims to celebrate art and creative vitality in our parks while supporting and celebrating local artists and providing them with a small stipend to help support their projects. Really about supporting local artists and seeing their vision come to light. This project is based on another project that happened in Colorado. And then that project was also based on earlier WPA projects. So there's a long history of this, of providing economic support and then also having this added creative project in our community. So this, I should say, will, the call will come out in early 2022, and the deadline for completion will be September 2022. So there'll be two park projects, hopefully, you know, before September of 2022. Prismaticah is another large-scale project that we're looking at. The goal for this project is to engage and foster community through interactive public art during the winter months. They, this is a set of 25 giant prismatic kaleidoscopes. We have not decided on a location. The install date would tentatively be in 2023. For three weeks, this is obviously pending. And the cost of this project is a little bit large. It's $40,000. We have $10,000 earmarked, and then we're seeking additional partners, Travel Marquette, and we're also looking at grants. We've also heard from people in the community who are interested in backing us in a casual way so far, but we're working on that as well. So basically, this is sort of a modern, a modern Ice Palace. It's all reflections. It lights up. It sort of becomes a kaleidoscope. There's lots of illusion and effects. And recently, a city in Michigan has had Prismaticah Grand Rapids. So if you're interested in learning more, looking at this more in-depth, that would be a place to look at. It's a participatory installation. These sculptures move and pivot, and they're more than two meters tall. So they have this rainbow effect that I think would be quite magical in Marquette. They're also a really big draw for tourists and the like, so. Another project that we're working on is the Cultural Trail. It would be along the bike multi-use path. The designs, the art, the quantity of artworks are all dependent on grant funding and input from stakeholders. So this is really from the Carp River out to Presque Isle. It is artwork and also interpretive signage. The idea is to tell our cultural history through both art and interpretive signs. There are $30,000 of matching funds earmarked for artwork, and this is pending external grants. Some of this, we had started prior to COVID, and we're still working on. Obviously, there were some delays there, so. So, and then finally, this is our budget for you to see here. I think it's important to note that there's $45,000 that's encumbered for the Queen City Courts. Conservation assessment is $12,000. The collection signage is $5,000. Creative grants, or park grants, excuse me, is $3,000. And the art at Kids Cove, we said that we would help support art there for up to $10,000. And that is, you know, an all-inclusive playground. Prismaticah, the traveling installation, up to $10,000 maximum. And then collection maintenance, $3,000. We also have funds marked for the indigenous art along the Cultural Trail. It's important to have indigenous makers represented on that trail. And matching funds with grants are slated to provide $60,000 for a public art project along the Cultural Trail. We also have money budgeted for art education so that we can engage a wide range of populations with the projects that we're seeing to fruition or initiating. So with that, are there questions?
Well, thank you, Emily. I certainly appreciate all the work you and the entire Public Art Commission has done for our community. Exciting projects on the horizon. I can't wait to see some of these in action. Appreciate you coming and presenting tonight. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. I am so glad that we have a public arts commission. I'm one of those people that pays attention to public arts as I visit other cities. And I think it really elevates the community to the next level of sophistication and fun. And my next comment probably won't surprise a lot of people, but I'm so thrilled that you chose the Hurley Park for the Queen City Courts. That park was in such dire straits and almost was decommissioned. And, you know, thanks to Rotary and a lot of really wonderful community people who donated, it looks much better. It looks wonderful. But the basketball court was in terrible shape.
There were weeds growing through the asphalt.
And cracks all over, and when they played, the ball would go in different directions. And so your commission is, we're the people that resurfaced that. And now adding the art to it will just really put a lot of extra vitality into that playground. And this is an area of the city where a lot of young children are, and it's really a necessary place to play. And so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I totally agree with what Commissioner Davis just said. And I think that your presentation really did a good job of highlighting how public art is not only something that's nice to look at and that can contribute to the character of a community, but it has real, practical, tangible benefits for folks. Like, if we are able to install this Prismaticah thing, as you said, right? This is something that could potentially draw tourists from other areas and help local businesses. The Hurley Park, you know, Queen City Courts project is incredible. I, you know, went to middle school at Bothwell Middle School. I had a lot of friends that lived in that neighborhood. And we liked to play sports, and we would go to Hurley Park a lot, but we would never use that basketball court. And, you know, we didn't want to, like, sprain an ankle or something, seriously. I mean, and so not only does it look amazing, but it's also creating a practical, nice, brand-new court for these kids. And I mean, I, we would have probably, my friends and I would have probably been down there every day if it looked like that and it was in that good condition. So I want to thank you, you know, for delivering those practical benefits to the community and making these art projects not only beautiful, but also, you know, functional and really benefiting the community in many different ways. So thank you for all that you do.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hale?
Thank you. Congratulations, and thanks, everybody, for all this tremendous amount of work. I wanted to ask a little bit more about community engagement because I know that's really important to what you're doing. And in particular, for the Indigenous Cultural Trail, since it's going to be covering a big area, and there's so much history and so many different kind of stories to tell for that particular piece. Could you give us a little more detail on how and who's going to be engaged in that conversation?
Yes, so with that project in particular, there's a lot of creative stakeholders. It won't just be us. Some of the folks I know for sure who will be involved are other institutions within the city of Marquette, like the Beaumire Cultural Heritage Center. And I know Tina has consulted in her office with many, many different people. So we're not just going to take the work and make an assumption without having every stakeholder have a say in it. Since none of the artwork is in a state of even, we haven't even asked for, like, RFQs or... I can't speak to what that process will exactly be, but with every project, we're really trying to ensure that everybody has a voice and that we're not just telling history from one perspective. There are many, many different histories, and so we're trying to be all-encompassing in the project that we put forth.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. I appreciate it. A couple of things struck me, though. One is, you've been very successful with a number of flats. In other words, art, for example, on the bike path or what's being done with the basketball court or what you've done with the side of a building. But have you been considering when you're going to move away from that and move to those things that are more permanent in nature? For example, hopefully, the Piling Field Pier system will be opened up this coming summer and certainly would lend itself very well for some permanent piece of public art that would highlight the history and the culture, the vibrancy of that area.
Yes, thank you for your question because it makes me realize that I didn't address my last slide, which talked about how we are preparing for other projects in Marquette. And one of those would be public art projects on the Spear Dock. So we actually, as the Spear Dock was being, you know, I don't know, dreamt up or just on the ground, we met and we discussed possibilities for areas, at least including some plinths within the park. And then also, we thought about the design of the park benches. And so the way that they're potentially, or I don't know if that's the right word. They're being built to consider public art so that there are facades on the benches that could be reliefs that would be able to be added to as well. And so some of these projects could be ongoing and incorporate a variety of voices in these spaces as well.
And of course, the project that's the elephant in the room is trying to get the Cultural Trail done. And this is year three that they've had that mission. Cultural Trail done, and this is year three that they've had that mission, and we still have nothing that we've seen on that trail. So what I would ask for is that if we could have a separate briefing that would talk specifically about the progress being made on the Cultural Trail and when the expectation is to have it finished, because that, in my view, is certainly the most critical project that you're working on. Anything that you have on your books, this is more important.
And I think, you know...
...than anything else.
Just to speak to the length of that project, so many other cities have much smaller cultural trails that have much more budget, right? We're lucky in the fact that we have a path that's already in existence, so that infrastructure doesn't need to be rebuilt. However, when we're telling history, and there are many histories, it's really important to engage a number of people. And COVID did really put us back at least a half of a year. And so I think another thing to consider with that project is capacity and capacity of the staff. It's a very small staff and with a lot to do. And I understand your concerns, and I can't speak to for the staff, but I do understand what it's like to work on a small staff with a lot of public projects. And I think there's a way of building, and I'm sure that the foundation is being set so that that project is taking steps in the right direction.
I mean, we always have the option that if you feel this is something that's too overwhelming for the staff, we can step it aside to a different group to do. So it doesn't have to be one that strictly stays within your functional area. The commission would have an opportunity, if we so desired, to appoint a separate freestanding ad hoc commission or ad hoc committee to deal with that. But I would be very interested in seeing, for example, the individual decision points for what is planned to go where, what stories would be told where, even though the folders that might tell those stories might be done. So those are all planning things that can be done without money.
Yeah, oh, that's, I agree with you 100%.
The execution point on it. But I certainly digress, and I thank you for your time.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, Emily. I certainly appreciate all the work that you have done, continue to do. Please pass along our sincere gratitude to the Public Art Commission, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes in the coming weeks and months and years.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your support.
Appreciate it. All right, commissioners, we are on to item number three here on consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote due to item 3E. Do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
A motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hill?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hanley? Commissioner Hill? City Clerk, or anyone else? Any discussion? Sorry, I forgot to ask. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Onto new business. We have two new business items. Number four is protecting democracy and promoting ballot access resolution. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the resolution aloud for us?
Thank you, Mayor. So the recommendation, obviously, would be to just adopt the resolution as presented, and the resolution reads, "Protecting democracy and promoting ballot access. Whereas, access to voting and participation in free, fair, and secure elections is fundamental to our system of governance. And whereas, Michigan voters overwhelmingly supported amending the Constitution to expand voting rights, make it easier to register and easier to vote. And 76% of voters in the city of Marquette and 67% of voters in Michigan voted yes on Proposition 3 in 2018. And whereas, restricting voting rights and undermining the fair, nonpartisan administration of elections is harmful to all communities, but disproportionately impacts already marginalized voters of color, lower-income communities, the elderly, as well as disabled voters. And whereas, in recent months, state legislatures, including Michigan's, have introduced dozens of bills that essentially restrict access to voting, make election administration and oversight less equitable and deficient, and undermine existing voting laws that maintain election security and ensure nonpartisan counting and certification of votes. And whereas, Michigan's established voter photo ID/affidavit requirement has proven effective and secure for 25 years. And in the 2020 election, only 11,400 Michiganders without ID, 0.2% of voters, signed an affidavit under penalty of perjury to vote in person. And whereas, elections in Michigan have been conducted safely and securely and without any significant fraud up to and including the 2020 election, as the Senate Oversight Committee report concluded. And whereas, the Marquette City Commission strongly opposes legislation or other efforts that would restrict access to the ballot, undermine the nonpartisan fair and efficient administration of elections, and restrict voting rights. And whereas, in 2021, the Secretary of State unveiled a legislative agenda that would improve access to voting whether early, absentee, or in-person, expedite absentee ballot processing, and make voting more convenient. Now, therefore, we, the Marquette City Commission, strongly support policies that expand and protect equitable access to voting and that strengthen and sustain a robust election infrastructure, including both material and human resources, and further resolve that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Office of the Secretary of State, the Governor's Office, and the members of the Upper Peninsula Delegation to the Michigan State Legislature. Dated this 13th day of December 2021, signed Jennifer A. Smith, Mayor of the city of Marquette."
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we adopt the resolution titled Protecting Democracy and Promoting Ballot Access.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second.
Commissioner Davis, discussion?
Yes, I am very pleased to support this resolution, and I really appreciate that the League of Women Voters, for all of their preparation and presenting a draft to the city for the resolution, and all of their leadership in advocating for equitable access to voting and secure elections. You know, a couple of months ago, there were, we started getting people coming here and talking about this issue and their concern over the potential restriction of voter rights. And I really appreciate the message that was sent by so many. So approving this resolution, we will be joining other municipalities in the county and in the state that are interested in protecting voter rights.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
I'm very thankful that this was brought before us. It is an issue that I hold dear in my heart, to make sure that the vote is easier to get than, rather than harder. And I am very happy that the League of Women Voters has brought this to us, so.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to everybody in this room. We have many people who've come to offer public comment or show their support in person. I've also received many emails and phone calls over the last few weeks from affiliates of League Women Voters, but also from folks who were mobilized by other grassroots organizations like Voters Not Politicians, which I also understand is supportive of this resolution. And also just concerned private citizens and city residents. My, just a little bit of experience that I had, in 2020, in November 2020, I volunteered to be a poll worker, like officially, they call it an election inspector in Marquette Township, since I'm an elected official in the city of Marquette. And it was a truly inspiring and eye-opening experience for me. And I know we have a lot of, you know, divisive discourse in this country about voting and elections right now, and some folks are lacking trust in our democratic process. But I would encourage anybody who has any doubts or any concerns about the integrity and the efficiency of our election system to take just a couple hours. You don't need to do what I did and volunteer for, like, 14 or 15 hours all day. Take a couple hours to be an election worker. You actually get paid a little bit of money, and I think it will put to rest any doubts that you might have. So that would be my challenge to folks. You know, I'm a big history nerd. I'm currently studying to become a history teacher. Throughout American history, we have always been, you know, gradually, and it's been uneven, but we've gradually been making progress toward expanding voting rights, expanding access to the ballot, trying to live up to those ideals that were laid out in documents like the Declaration of Independence. You know, when we're in the voting booth, it's one of the few places where we all truly are equal, or at least, you know, where we should be. And I think that perhaps not since, and I don't think this is an exaggeration at all, like, I don't think since perhaps the institution of Jim Crow after the end of Reconstruction has there been such a widespread concerted and sophisticated effort to restrict voting access and voting rights for certain populations of people in this country. And it is deeply concerning. And that, so not only is this common sense, but I also think it's incredibly important. This isn't just checking a box. It's very important for nonpartisan bodies and for elected officials, like the city commission, to make statements like this at this critical time. Around the world, democracy is being challenged. Authoritarianism seems to be on the rise once again. And, and not to sound too grandiose, but I mean, I think really, the world is watching us in this country right now. We are the city on a hill. And not only is expanding voting access and voting rights going to benefit all voters, but it's also just the right thing to do, and it's the American thing to do. And so thank you to everybody who brought this resolution to us and made this possible. Thank you to city staff for working on it. Thank you to the mayor for putting it on our agenda. And I'm glad that we're talking about this, because it needs to be talked about more in this country right now.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hill?
Not that I can top that, but thank you, everyone who's here, and thank you to the commissioners who have spoken so eloquently about the importance to vote. I just want to call out that in my, my parents' lifetime, they paid poll tax when my father was in Texas, and have also, I have family from the South who were in communities that were literally visited by federal troops in order to make sure that people could vote in the 60s in Mississippi. So it is, I am deeply personally touched by this issue. My parents have the poll tax receipts. I have seen them since I was a child, and I'm afraid that we are moving back to that kind of system if we do not stand up and say that we are going to continue to maintain the rights that we have, as Commissioner Bonzel said so well, have been striving towards, and yet having a hard time reaching, really until 1965, which was just one year before I was born, that we actually really tried to make sure that everyone could vote in this country. So I'm really grateful to the folks who brought us here today and have made this all possible. And I will commit to making sure that in our coming elections and my term here, that I can do all I can to make sure that our voting here is free and fair and that we maintain to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Michigan and Marquette. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner, or Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to briefly say that during our 2017 special election we had in this district for state rep, I also was a poll challenger for that election. And one of the things I challenged myself to do was, okay, how could someone realistically try to actually fraudulently vote? And by the end of the day, honestly, within the first hour, it became abundantly clear that it's just not possible. Our election system is very secure. There's so many checks and balances within the system that I was really impressed with that. At that point, it became a very relaxing day, in a way. But, you know, earlier this year, I was deployed to DC after watching the aftermath, what happens when we discredit and challenge the integrity of our election process and our voting process. And I didn't think I would ever live to see something like that happen in this country. But I am very proud that this commission, a nonpartisan group, can support a nonpartisan resolution like this to support our voting rights for our residents and hopefully get the message across as well down in Lansing. But, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Stonehouse?
I'm not going to venture to the northeast corner of Hyde Park. Does that ring a bell with anybody? Speaker's Corner, the old tradition of the English, where if you were in Hyde Park in the northeast corner, you could say anything you wanted to, you could deliver a speech to whoever you wanted to deliver it to. And you still have crowds that appear there today. It's a little bit of a tourist attraction, but it certainly speaks, I think, to the value of democracy and as we have it in this country. We all should be deeply concerned with election security, not only what we do now, but what may be in the future. We know what the internet is. We know the difficulties and the challenges sometimes. We know what the Russians tried to do, and that's been reported several times. So those steps that are put in place to try and make sure that never happens is important to us. And I can't say you do this, you do that. That's really for the folks that are excellent, that are the experts in cybersecurity. But guaranteeing our elections, as we have guaranteed them today, is critical for this democracy, is critical for this town, is critical for all Americans. So thank you very much for bringing it forward. And we've done our little bit, I guess, to try and get the word out and to continue to fight that battle to make sure we have secure elections. Thank you.
So I'll just wrap up by saying, I think it was a couple of months ago that we were first approached by several, maybe more than several, a couple dozen at least residents, to do something about voting access and to use our collective voice to stand up for the voting rights of everyone. And I think as a nonpartisan body, it completely makes sense that we do that. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us a document that we could work with and make work here for the city of Marquette, the city commission. I want to thank Commissioner Davis for working with the League of Women Voters to get this to myself and to our city manager and our assistant city manager and to the two of them for kind of refining it and making it something that we all feel like we can sign, and then use our individual and our collective voice after this meeting to, you know, get the word out and make our opinion known. So thank you all. It was a team effort, and it's much appreciated and certainly important. Let's go ahead and take a vote. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, please help us out.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. I don't usually allow applause, but that one's loud. It feels good. All right, item number five, Public Works and Utilities Labor Agreement. City Clerk, could we please have the background on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette has reached a new agreement with the Public Works and Utilities Employees' Chapter of Ask Me Local 1852. The bargaining unit has ratified the agreement. The main issues during negotiations were the job posting and bidding procedures and wages. The parties have agreed to a three-year contract with the addition of the day before Thanksgiving as a holiday, a 10-cent increase to hourly shift differentials, a 5-cent per hour increase to the whole rate, a 2% wage increase for year one, and wage reopeners in 2022 and 2023 if needed. The city commission will have the opportunity to review and consider approving the wage proposal for years two and three, once that package has been settled. The city's bargaining team commends the Public Works and Utilities Unit of Ask Me for their willingness to work with us to negotiate an agreement that is fair to the employees and the city. Fiscal effect: for year one, a 2% increase to wages, 10 cent increase to shift differentials, and a 5 cent increase to the whole rate equates to a cost of roughly $68,000. This amount is included in the fiscal year '22 budget. Recommendation: approve the Public Works and Utilities Employees' Labor Agreement effective October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2024, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the Public Works and Utilities Employees' Labor Agreement effective October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2024, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Do we have a second on that motion? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Only that's, I think it's a fair and equitable agreement and in the interest of both parties.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Couldn't agree more.
Any other commissioners with any discussion on this contract, this item? I would just like to add that I think both sides of the negotiating team did a nice job. I know it's been kind of a difficult year budget-wise. I think this works for one year, and then we've got two additional years with a reopener to talk about at a later date, so, nice job. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. And on to our second public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. Go ahead and approach the podium if you'd like to make a public comment.
Hi. Darlene Allen, again, from the League of Women Voters.
Darlene Allen, again, from the League of Women Voters, 805 North Front Street. I just want to very quickly thank the commission for approving the resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, for helping us get this resolution introduced, and especially thank you all so much for the comments you made. It really means a lot to hear like that, to hear something like that coming from the commission, and I know it's probably going to help all of us go back and do our work and feel supported in a different way. So, thank you very much.
Sue Holliday, 2022 Cherry Street, Marquette. I just want to talk on this young lady's comments about panhandlers. I lived in the city of Durham, North Carolina, where there were a lot of people on the street asking for money. People would come up to you from, asking for money, but I would take them to a restaurant and buy them some food. What the city of Durham, North Carolina adopted was a registration process for people who panhandled for money, because obviously you can make a lot of money panhandling. I panhandled in the 60s or 70s, so that maybe the commission ought to think about registering panhandlers and giving them a vest so that they have a clear path to, to panhandling. I mean, some people don't know how to use institutions, some people don't trust institutions, but at least panhandlers would be regulated in our city. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me. Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone else? All right, public comment is closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We will start things off with pro temp mayor. You weren't ready, huh?
A little bit. Honestly, Your Honor, I don't think I have any further comment I want to add for tonight, other than I'm glad we could have a good productive meeting, a very productive work session on some possible housing development, and want to thank everyone again in the public for your advocacy for the voting rights and for also showing up at the meeting here tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, again, really deeply grateful for everyone's participation and taking part in government and being in these public spaces together is, is an ongoing conversation that doesn't ever stop. And how we do that, whether we have masks on in this new reality that we live in, and how we are going to figure out how to live with some of these new challenges that are so big and so large, like climate change, and, and how we're going to figure out how to address this big housing issues. So I'm really grateful for this opportunity for us to have public conversations and also encourage you to be engaged in the planning processes we're going to have going forward over the next year, in how we are going to shape our city in land use and in other ways. The public art presentation is just one part of that that you heard about today. And, and so, I hope we all can, can you, continue to do this. We are going to be here one more time next week, so we'll be right back here, one week from today because of the holidays, but deeply grateful to all your work. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Very short, Your Honor. I thought you had a good and effective work session. Well done. I thought you had a great meeting tonight and certainly accomplished at least a few things. Other than that, we'll see you next, next week, same time, same channel.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I just want to emphasize that I do think it's very important, and I'm very glad that we passed the resolution protecting democracy and promoting valid access. And thanks again to everybody that showed up to the meeting to talk about that. I also, you know, we also voted, of course, on a labor agreement for our public works and utilities staff, and I also just wanted in extent to extend a thank you to all of our public works folks who were working real hard over the weekend to get the streets clear. I know that, you know, especially when we received such a large amount of snow, and it's such a heavy snow, I mean, it was a really heavy snow. I talked to a lot of people with like, some pretty heavy, like, some heavy-duty snowblowers who were having issues, and it was getting stuck. So, this is a, this was a big challenge, and I think that we were able to meet it as best that we could, and our public works department has done a very good job of working within budgetary constraints, within just practical constraints. We have many miles of, of street in Marquette to clear and a whole lot of snow. So, thank you to them for doing a very difficult job, a thankless job, a job that is often subject to a lot of public criticism, and, and for doing it extremely well and without complaint. The, a couple of things I did want to mention. So first of all, I have had several, you know, residents and constituents reach out to me with concerns about waste collection and recycling. You know, as just one small example, I recently had a resident tell me that, you know, she knows all the rules and understands all the regulations and the system and the schedule for our recycling system, and knows that during Glass Week, you're just supposed to put out just the glass in a rigid, hard-walled container, and, and you're not supposed to put out the other, you know, single-stream recyclables. So she did all that, and her glass did get collected, but it got collected along with the plastic rigid container that she placed the glass in. And this is the second time that this has happened to her in the last few months. So, this is just one, it's kind of funny, you know, unless, I guess, you are that person, so sorry. We're not trying to make light of your, your, what is really a frustrating situation, but I think it's also a good illustrative example of the issues we've been having for a long time with our solid waste hall or waste management. And so, I know it's challenging, I know they're facing challenges. I have to admit that I still don't fully, as a commissioner, understand the exact nature of the challenges that they're facing and why this is still such an issue with, you know, recycling and trash being collected on time, or, you know, people, you know, not having glass picked up, or, you know, things like this happening. So, I mean, presumably that bin went in with the glass and is causing contamination to the glass product, which has been a major problem, right? So, I think, I just wanted to put a pin in that and note it and, and bring it up, because we've periodically discussed this issue for over a year now, and it, I'm sure there's been some progress made, but it's, you know, it's, it seems to be sporadic and inconsistent. So, I did promise that resident that I would bring that up in this meeting, so, something I want, I want us to continue talking about and try and find a solution to. And then finally, I just think it's really cool to see, on a positive note, I think it's really cool to see all the important work the Public Art Commission is doing. It's really exciting to see their schedule and their plans moving forward, and I think in 2022, we're going to see a lot of progress on a lot of different issues, potentially on housing, also potentially on public art. And, and I think that over the next year, we'll be able to get a lot of good stuff done, despite some of the constraints that we're facing as a community.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I'm going to just piggyback on a couple of things that Commissioner Bonzal brought up. As, last week, as I pulled in my, I actually had my bin for my glass recycling, but it occurred to me that, the last message that I remember, December was the last time that we're going to do curbside glass recycling. So if, if our city manager could just address that and make sure that we get some publicity out on that, I think it's really important, or I will be putting out my glass recycling that first full week in January. The second thing is, you know, welcome to winter. This, you know, this past weekend storm was certainly a challenge for all of us in relearning how to drive on snowy roads and having the patience for the city plows as they work their way through the streets. And I had a couple phone calls. I, I checked out social media and I saw complaints, and I will not mention you, Barb, but, you know, Barb had other issues that are very legitimate. You know, as a result, I drove around the city at 9:30 Saturday night, and I, I understand the frustration, because in our four-wheel-drive truck, we were having trouble getting through the city streets. You know, and again, I think our, our city manager will be addressing some of the plowing priorities, but I do know that the safety of the citizens is really what is at the top of the list. And that means that we need to get the well-utilized roads first before we get some of the, the side streets, and, and it's just going to take some patience for us. You know, we just have a very skilled and dedicated plowing crew, and I really wanted to acknowledge that and, and thank them for all their work that they did this weekend, because there was a lot of plowing to be had, and, and our streets are clear. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
I think most of the commissioners have touched on everything that I would like to say. I do want to say that I really thought we had a great meeting today, and I was very happy with the work session and all the information that we were given about what looks to be a very promising project. I mean, that's all I need today. Thank you.
I just wanted to remind the public that we have a meeting next week, which is, again, usually it's the second and last Monday, but because of the holiday week, it's moved up. And then we don't have a meeting again until January 10th, so there's a little bit of a break in meeting times. And then, just a note, that's something that I traditionally do over, you know, between that, that break, is I take a little bit of time and try to do some goal-setting for the city, you know, for the, what, what I see as the priorities for that next year. So I'll be thinking about 2022 a lot, look forward to a lot of conversations in the coming year, and would be happy to talk with commissioners and the public about what they, they think we should be focused on. I know we have a whole master planning process, strategic planning process, but I try to just do a little reset with the new year as well. That's all I have. City manager, Karen, if you don't mind to chime in, I think a couple questions were pitched your way, and, you know, one thing I did want to ask, and maybe you can punt it over to our chief of police, is, is there a rule on the panhandlers? That was one question that came up that I wanted to circle back on.
That is a lot, a lot more complex. There are a few things that, that need to be considered with panhandling, and I know that our police chief can, can further elaborate on that, but we would actually probably prefer to take maybe a day to kind of document those and share those with the commission. But I do know that we do have some, some residents here that are concerned, so chief, if you could just eloquently, briefly explain some of the things with panhandling and some of the things that you've experienced recently, and we can further then do a more detailed explanation to the commission later.
Sure. As far as the panhandling goes, there are ordinances in place to deal with some of that, but unfortunately, with the current situation with COVID and the courts and the jails and some of those things, it's, it's kind of a hard topic to enforce. And there are some dynamics that come into play with organizations throughout the city and the services they provide. So, it'd be something I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk with you, or sit down and talk with some of the residents on, but, you know, it's something that we can look forward to, trying to address some of those issues. But unfortunately, like is being said, Marquette is continuing to grow, and the issues that we'll be facing regarding certain topics and certain services provided throughout the city is something that we'll be constantly evaluating and having to deal with. So, yep.
All right. Moving on to glass recycling, as Commissioner Davis had, had mentioned, and we are actually working on finalizing those, those messages to go out, hopefully within the next day or so. We did not want to confuse it with this glass recycling, because we want to make sure this one is the last one and went off without a, without a hitch here. But as Commissioner Davis had said, glass recycling will, curbside glass recycling will end, and we will be doing drop-off location only for glass recycling. There are two locations that are available. There will be a drop-off location, obviously, at the Waste Management location, which is at 910 West Barriga Avenue. Their hours are Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 11:00 a.m., and 11:30 to 3:00 p.m., and we understand that those hours may not be convenient for the working folk or others. So we do have a location, located at the Municipal Service Center. There will be a bin available that will be labeled with "glass recycling," and that will essentially be, you know, an after-hours or later in the afternoon drop-off location. And you will see, obviously, the bin outside. If it is full, please let somebody in the Municipal Service Center check. No, we will check those quite frequently, and we will take care of the glass recycling at that location. And there were several factors that went into that, but we, we realized that there's a, a need to continue with recycling every week, so that, that's one week that you guys skip is, is kind of, kind of hard to catch up sometimes. So, also, moving on to the hot topic right now, or cold topic right now, is snow. You guys said it would snow here, and boy, were you right. It was a beautiful view with the snow that happened, but it was, it was quite the snowstorm. It was a heavy snow, and that heavy wet snow comes with certain challenges. I think we were blessed with the previous snowstorm that happened earlier in the week that was the light fluffy kind, the easy kind to move, and this, this one was much more difficult. And just to kind of put it in perspective with the plowing strategy, the city has eight plowing routes. And once that snow stops, it takes a solid eight to 10 hours to get through one route. Now, add on a heavier snow, and also a quicker falling snow that happens more in, at one time, and then also, the timing of when that snow falls is also an important factor to consider. So, this snowfall essentially ended in late morning and, or mid-morning, and at that time, we had vehicles out on, onto the streets, those local streets, which provide a little bit of an obstacle for those plows to get through. So, when we talk about the plowing hierarchy, we talk about, they hit the main streets first, so those are your routes. Those are your main routes, those are keeping the ambulance routes clear, those are your main streets that you see. Then we move into local streets. Now, there are some local streets that we do take as a priority. Obviously, as I said, they take the routes to the, the ambulance routes to the hospital, and also those really tricky hills, by the way. Those are our priority as well. But, that second priority are those local streets. And then lastly, we, we go towards those dead-end streets and those cul-de-sacs. So unfortunately, those quieter streets that have that great quiet feel when you, you don't have the traffic, unfortunately, those also mean those are last to be done. Now, this storm, the snowstorm, as I said, ended in the, in the mid-morning, and those, those cars were out and possibly in the parking, in the streets, which make it difficult for plows to get through. So just to be most efficient, they do plow in the evening hours, they do plow those, those local streets. So, some, there were a few or handful of streets that Commissioner Davis had pointed out and that I had seen that were not done until Saturday evening, Sunday morning. And we appreciate everybody reporting those to us, but we were getting to those as quickly and as safely as possible. Now, I also wanted to note, real quickly, is about, over 25% of our sidewalks, of our city sidewalks are, are also plowed or shoveled. So that's 19 miles of 68 miles of city sidewalk are kept plowed throughout the year. So, that, those routes are our school zones, a lot of our pedestrian routes that are going into town and into some of those, those high-working areas. So, and, and obviously, like I said, focusing on the schools. So, our DPW crews are, are working tirelessly throughout the night, throughout the day, and then back into the evening, and we've heard many, many compliments, and we, we appreciate the patience and the, the space that the still plows need in order to do their job effectively and safely. So, huge, huge thank you to our DPW crew, but also a huge thank you to the residents for being patient and for helping us as well, and to dig out your neighbors when needed as, as, as some of us, some of us may need. So, did I answer all the commission questions? I'm sorry. Okay, perfect. One last announcement that I do have, is you may have seen, the finance department hours have changed. They are open Monday through Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., but Friday is what's changing. Friday has changed from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Now, if you are trying to make a payment on that Friday, we do have several options, as always. We have, you can mail in your payment, but you can also drop off your payment at the drop box, which is located in the upper parking lot, right on, under that window that's located out front, or you can pay online as well. And if you need special arrangements, please feel free to call the finance department. They are still answering the phone, but those office hours walking in are closed to the public after 11:30 on Fridays. I think that is all.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and I echo your thank you to our public works or snowplow operators. It was a tough, heavy, wet snowfall, and we certainly appreciate their work. All right, I think that's all. We are adjourned at 7:25 p.m. Thanks, everyone.